We're on. I'm going to, at this time, reconvene the public meeting relating to the definitive plan for All Purpose Storage Gardner, but prior to that, let me read the obligatory announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the Director of Community Development and Planning pursuant to the Open Meeting and Public Records Law. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. All right, with that out of the way, is anyone in here recording tonight? Needs to identify themselves to the chair. Hearing none. Continuation of our public meeting, Definitive Plan for All Purpose Storage Gardner LLC, 143 Colony Road. Any preliminaries for us, Mr. Power Guard, before we invite the engineer to the floor?
Just real quick, I know the planning board did take a site walk. The majority didn't. I know Paul couldn't make it that day unfortunately, but the other four members did take the site walk along with Rob Oliver and myself and Chuck Ritchie from the engineering firm. And I think we established some more comments from that site walk and Rob has been diligently working on a response to the drainage plan that is fairly significant, so hopefully that the proponent can address that most of those items, if not all, tonight and continue discussion.
Very good, sir. I'd like to invite you to the floor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chuck Ritchie with Fieldstone Land Consultants, representing All Purpose Storage Gardner LLC. I was here a few weeks ago discussing this project. I'll give you a quick little background on the proposal to refresh your memories. This is an existing cell storage at 143 Colony Road. It's owned industrial. It has sixty, sixty-five thousand existing square foot, square feet of storage buildings on site and we're proposing an additional twenty-five thousand onto the rear end side of the site. At some of the comments from the last meeting were, you were looking for some additional landscaping, some additional lighting information, as well as to address the city engineers' comments that we had received at the time. Many of those items were also brought up at the site walk, particularly landscaping and the existing surfaces that were on site. In the last few weeks, we've addressed landscaping and lighting. We've had it sent out to a third-party lighting technician to spec some lights. The lighting will be very minimal, downcast and won't really affect any of the adjacent properties as typical for this use. You know, we have a few building-mounted lights as previously proposed with lumens shown on the ground and we're well at zero all the way around the perimeter. Landscaping was addressed by some additional plantings along the front. Right-of-way, there was kind of a steep slope just off the road, but we have three areas of proposed landscaping to try to break up the site a little bit and make it a bit less impervious from a visual perspective. Particularly, we have a section here and an effort to put some at the end of the aisle here and down at the corner here where the other entrance is.
Chuck, what are you going to do with the land between those landscaped areas?
For now, we're proposing just to leave it as is. It seemed to be stable from what we saw, so rather than rip it all up and do too much, just, you know, keep it in the proposed landscaped areas. We also addressed the city engineers' comments from last time. We just received some back this week. I haven't had time to draft a formal response. We addressed the majority of them, but there are still some new ones coming in based on the new design, the new design to capture the runoff from these two end buildings. We feel confident that we can address those with the drainage report that was provided and that will be minimal plan changes needed to address those remaining comments. Hopefully, tonight's discussion goes well and we will be looking for conditional approval tonight based on any concerns you may have and primarily addressing the engineering comments to the engineer's approval. If there's any other board comments or questions, I'm the chair, I'll give it back to you.
Well, in light of the city engineer's evaluation of your stormwater report, the depth of your test pits, your culvert capabilities, capacities, and some other items that escaped me right now, the board feels that those could have a significant impact to your design. So, we really can't take any action at this time either way until those are addressed or at least responded to.
Okay. From our perspective, you know, we think we can address that, you know, with the drainage report. A lot of that is calculations and that existing culvert, you know, we're not proposing to do too much to it now, but if you feel that way, you know, that's, I'd like, yeah, if that's...
Well, his comments were pretty significant and that should be, I think, an engineer-to-engineer thing.
Okay. My only concern would be, or input would be rather, if we come back, when we come back for a third meeting, you know, what type of discussion would we have at that? Because really, I'm thinking, you know, we work with Rob to get it addressed and then, you know, as a condition of approval. Because we have to come back and we would just say, you know, we've addressed his comments and then, I don't anticipate much more conversation, but ultimately, that's up to you guys, I guess.
So, what you're proposing is you're asking the board for conditional approval with the caveat that we work with Mr. Oliver to address all his concerns?
Yes.
How would that play in with Mass DEP?
If that's...
In light of the comments we got from Mass DEP and how the existing conditions, the pre-development conditions are calculated based on historic conditions rather than current day, there is an opportunity or a possibility that I see that, you know, layout of the drainage could change, whether it's larger detention basin, infiltration basin, you know, modified layout. Chairman was correct about the test pits, groundwater elevations. I'm not currently satisfied with the information that was provided, so, you know, I think there's an opportunity that this could change slightly, you know, from its current layout. They also, there's the issue of working with the Conservation Commission, which they're still currently doing. So, there's, the problem where you have two boards looking at the same project at the same time is one board could ask for changes and then you have to go back to the other Boarder Commission with those changes. So, I don't think there's any huge, I know there's a timeline and I know the applicant would like to get this closed and approved and not have to come back, but I think there's enough out there that between the planning board and the Conservation Commission, things could still change, so I think giving it, you know, till the next hearing for Chuck and I to sort through my comments, let them respond and come back to you and say, yeah, the changes they've made, they've satisfied, you know, my comments and my review. So, as much as I know Chuck, you want to get this closed up, I think it'd be beneficial to the board to, you know, go to another meeting and go from there.
I agree, as opposed to coming back a third time and then having to come back a fourth. And with the timeline clock ticking, if it starts getting close, you can easily ask for an extension.
Okay.
To keep that rolling.
So, Chairman, if I may, on that subject matter, the board received the plan in August of, late August, August 31st, '23, so it has ninety days to render a decision, which brings you to late November, so going, getting on to the November meeting agenda. That will be the next meeting anyways and it's the second Tuesday of November, so that will be well in advance of the 29th.
Okay, and is it ninety days from the submission date or?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
My, I guess, as a counterpoint, if, I don't know if you guys typically do, I mean, DEP process at the same time as planning board here, would you, if, I'm not sure how the next Conservation Commission meeting is going to go, that's handled by our wetland department, would then, would it be acceptable, like, possible to get a conditional approval based on their approval or would you, would they want to be approved before coming back?
Mr. Chairman, you want me to address that?
Yes, please.
So, the planning board has approved projects with conditional upon
Okay.
Conservation Commission approval.
Yeah.
In this case, I'm not sure. It depends on the feedback that we get from the Conservation Commission and DEP in this case.
Yeah.
So, you know, worst-case scenario, you'd be asking for an extension at the November meeting for another thirty days or whatever, whatever you want to request. If your comfort level's not there, if the planning board's comfort level's not there at the November meeting, then we'd probably suggest that you do ask for an extension. But at this point, I think you guys, you know, Rob and yourself can work things out and try to get to the point where Rob's satisfied.
Okay. Let me throw something else at you. In any changes that I'm foreseeing, you know, based on these comments, would result in almost certainly not an increase of building or an increase in impervious area? I mean, it would generally be, you know, as I forget who suggested, would be a larger detention basin to meet those standards, so that would, from my perspective, it would be, the changes made would be, you know, larger or increased drainage areas rather than a potential, you know, building changes. Would that factor into, like, the anticipated changes that we're seeing?
Well, I'm hoping that you have those changes identified on the plans that you submit for the November meeting.
Okay.
That's the goal, I think, we want to reach, right, Rob?
Yeah. So, even if it were, from your perspective, improving the site even further than it has been proposed, you'd still want to wait till the next meeting to see that?
Well, yeah, I think the planning board wants to vote on the final plan.
Okay.
And that's what you need and then you actually build to what plan that the planning board approved.
Yeah, okay. Is there any other comments? So, just from what I'm hearing, it's just, you know, make sure we address all Rob's engineers' comments. Is there anything else that you may want to see before then? Is it catch-all? Not that it comes to my mind, but...
I don't have anything, Mr. Power Guard. So, how large is the site again, Chuck?
How what?
How large is the site?
Buildings or total impervious?
Both. So, acreage? How much, how many acres do you have there?
The site, the site or like the...
Yeah, yeah, no, the entire site.
It's pretty large. We've got a large wetland area up above us here.
So, I guess the easier, would the easier question be how many, what's the size of the developed site?
Sorry, yeah. Four-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet is the existing site.
Okay.
That's twelve...
Just over ten acres.
Yeah.
Ten acres, yeah. Yeah, eleven-ish.
What's the square footage of your landscaped area in front there?
Probably ten feet wide by, how deep was that? Five feet, so two, hundred-and-fifty square feet maybe?
So, your client's not willing to landscape that entire front berm?
Is that, is that...
Well, I mean...
I mean, we're trying to meet, you know, what you're asking for.
But you have a lot of dirty fill there along that front. It's all a mixture of concrete, asphalt.
Yeah, it was poured out, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, I think it would look a lot better. I mean, if you're going to take the time to make three different landscaped planting areas.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it would be well worth the effort to remove the existing berm and replace it with some loam and seed it. And you can stabilize it in that way. I mean, I know it is a pretty good-sized slope and I don't know, Rob, if you want to weigh in on this one too, but I think it would look a lot nicer with loam and seed maintained along with your planting areas and I don't think it's a lot to ask.
Sure, yeah.
Based on the size of the site and the eighty thousand square feet of building area you have on site.
I don't, I don't know who would be the correct person to ask, perhaps you, would be, would you, so that fence there is right on the right-of-way line? Would you prefer to see, I mean, we'd be willing to do some perhaps street trees instead, like, up on the high side, but that would be in the right-of-way? Would that be, I mean, we're certainly...
Like Derek took a bunch down already.
Yeah, I worry about the longevity
Okay.
Trees in that particular, it's a lot of truck traffic and stuff through there that would have to get cleared through the DPW director if he wanted them in the right-of-way.
So, it'd be easier...
And where are the power lines? Are the power lines on your side?
Yeah, there are power lines on that side.
See, I don't think you want to put trees there.
Okay.
But I think even on the internal berm slope, I think it would be, improving that whole slope would, I think, do a ton of good for that site with your landscaped areas and loam and seed the remainder. This is my thought.
I agree.
Also? Okay, thank you. What I'm going to do is I'm going to continue this public meeting until our November meeting.
Do you have a date on that? Is it on your website?
Second Tuesday. Don't have my phone on me.
We'll be in contact too.
I think it's the thirteenth.
It's November fourteenth.
Fourteenth?
Yeah, fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, it's right on here.
Okay.
Who's that's question knows?
All right, next up, we have a public meeting. Definitive Site Plan for Private Oversight LLC. That will convene at 7:00 PM and until such time, we are in recess. A public meeting of the Gardner Planning Board. For Sediment Businesses, allow me to read the public meeting notice into the record. "In accordance with Article 10 of the City of Gardner Zoning Code, Chapter 675-1010, Site Plan Review. Notices hereby given that the Gardner Planning Board will conduct a public review meeting on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Hubbard Conference Room, Room 203, City Hall, Manca Annex, 115 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass., to consider the definitive plan application submitted by Private Oversight LLC, 21B West Hill Drive, Westminster, Massachusetts, 01473. The definitive plan depicts a proposed fifty-two-unit multifamily development lying mainly in Gardner with a portion lying over the municipal boundary in Templeton. Of the total units, forty-three lie in Gardner. The project will be constructed on sixteen-point-six-nine acres lying in the General Residential Three District at the westerly end of West Broadway, close to the Templeton Line, on an undeveloped parcel. Plans are also available for viewing in the Department of Community Development and Planning in Room 201 of the City Hall Annex. All persons interested in this matter or who desire to offer testimony are invited to participate." Any preliminaries before I invite our presenter to the floor, Mr. Power Guard?
I guess, just real quick, we, the project came before the city in July of this year. We had a development review committee meeting, provided comments back to the applicant who then submitted another revised preliminary plan and then we had another working session, I believe it was late August, before they submitted their definitive plan, which is in front of the board tonight.
Okay. Sir?
All right.
Name and affiliation and the floor is yours.
All right. My name's Trevor Fletcher. I'm with Graz Engineering and yes, as was stated, this is a multifamily townhouse-style apartment dwelling-type development and it's going to consist of fifty-two units and pretty much the buildings you can see here, this is going to be your access onto West Broadway here. You're going to have a couple of buildings off to a short offshoot to the left and then another building here, one right here, another one right here, here and here and here, and then a small office building to control, you know, rentals and all that stuff. So, it's going to be eight buildings total when it's all said and done. It's going to be phased down into four phases. We'll get to that phasing plan a little bit and then at the end here is going to be a little turnaround right at the end and it's sized according to the subdivision regulations for a dead-end road so that any vehicle can turn around up there, including fire apparatus. The access on West Broadway was reviewed by Fusson O'Neill, which was included in the documents submitted to the definitive plan and they determined that the access is not going to over-innitate the intersection and should not cause any significant impact to the roadway or any existing dwellings in the area. The development is going to be serviced by public water and public sewer. The stormwater system is designed to minimize and treat stormwater prior to it discharging off-site, which is generally down to the Deer Hill side into West Broadway and then there's a couple other evaluation points up back here that end up going down into the swamp right behind the PACC in that area, so that's kind of the area that the drainage is going to. I know that Rob Oliver addressed some comments to us about the stormwater system and I read through them and it seems like all of them can be remedied through, you know, some small alterations to the stormwater, but I don't think anything large has to change from this plan here. Each of the main structures are going to have to be serviced by a sprinkler system per the fire department and so that will be designed when the time comes by a certified stormwater, certified fire system designer. In the beginning here, right to the beginning, in this area here, there will be a mailbox area and a dumpster area. There's going to be four, proposed for four, five cubic yard dumpsters. I know the Board of Health issued some comments about, you know, typical generation of a development this size and she said about weekly, it would be about sixteen-point-six cubic yards of garbage a week and we have enough room for twenty, so we're right around the size. I know she had some comments about having some further into the development. The, you know, the reasoning behind having it early on is so that everybody would have access to it. You can bring garbage down before you go to work or anything like that on your way out, just pull in and drop it off. And then another important factor is that it's available during the first phase, which is just going to be these first two buildings down here and so we don't want, you know, the proposed garbage kind of right in the center here because then they wouldn't have it for the first phase, so that's kind of important too. All the dumpster and everything like that is all screened from a butters and from the main roadway, so screening should not be an issue there. The, throughout the development, our goal is to, you know, keep the speed limit around ten to fifteen miles an hour, keep it to as close to like parking lot speeds as possible. So, we've done that in a variety of ways, you know, just have a kind of curved design and stuff like that and also implementing raised crosswalks wherever there is a main crosswalk that a lot of pedestrians would go through, so that's obviously going to slow down in traffic. People aren't going to want to shoot off those at twenty miles an hour. So, that was our goal, to keep, you know, the speed down for safety of everybody and yeah, you know, just increase safety overall. For the parking, throughout the entire dwelling, the whole development, we have a hundred-and-twenty-five spaces. Some of the spaces are in front of the units. We limited that to eight spaces in front of each unit. Other areas are off to the sides of the units, which, you know, consist of the other half of the parking. There's some down behind the apartment building and the whole goal behind all the parking on site was to keep all the parking within relative walking distance for each unit, so we didn't want any units in the middle of, you know, these larger unit buildings, the ten-unit buildings, to have to walk all the way from down here or down here even, all the way, so we kept all the eight units, eight spaces in front of those units centralized so that they didn't have to walk too, too far.
Trevor, if I may?
Yeah.
Does this plan right here accurately reflect the site plan?
Yeah, yeah, more or less. You know, obviously it doesn't have the facades and all that. I can go to the site plan if you want.
Could you please?
Yep, this one right here.
I know, the site plan is not easy to read either because there's so much going on.
Yeah, I figured the isometric might be a little easier to see the visualization of everything, but I can go through this. It's no big deal. All right, so here's the front part of the development. This is the access off of Patriots Road right here. In this area is the proposed mailbox area and the dumpster area here, so that's all going to be kept in front. Down in this area, down here, is going to be one of the infiltration basins in which half of the site's stormwater is going to go, get treated and discharge out onto West Broadway and head towards this drainage culvert here. That all has been designed with that point in mind so that it's going to be less peak discharge going to that drainage culvert and so that should be able to handle it no problem. The, right here, so this five and the six-unit building, this is all going to be part of Phase One here and so there's some parking over here and then there's eight spaces in front of each unit here and here and there's snow storage throughout to keep that in mind. And then we have a small three-unit building here and there's just two spaces in front of each of those dwellings. And then directly next to that, we have a large parking area which will provide parking for the next sheet here. So, we have two, one ten-unit building and one nine-unit building right across from each other, so we have eight spaces in front of each of these and the remainder is going to have parking through here and down in here behind the offices. And followed by that, we have an offshoot right to the right. We have three parking spaces here along the sidewalk there and we did provide extra parking furthermore than what is required so that, you know, if anybody has guests or anything like that, they have, they have a place to park as well. We don't want anybody's spots getting stolen when people have company. And so, we have another ten-space parking lot here, a five-unit building, another five-unit and a ten-unit building here, so both those have eight spots in front of them, eight spots in front of this one. And then the next sheet is the last one and we have a small one over here so that units on this end have a good place to park if they can't park in front. We have the turnaround right here and all the other stormwater is going to head to this infiltration basin back here and it has two outlets, one on each side just to disperse it so it's not all just going through the woods at one point. And so, that's the general layout, if that helps. And then, so yeah, the parking, I know that they issued a comment based on the kind of definition of the way eight spaces in front of a building could be approved by the planning board. I think Christine can go through that.
Evening, gentlemen. So, I just wanted to address briefly the questions that were raised and we received the comment this afternoon, so thank you, Trevor, for forwarding that. One of the comments on the parking was handicapped accessibility, whether there were spaces required. And so, I was able in the time that I had today to go through the FHA and ADA requirements. The only... through the FHA and ADA requirements. The only, um, requirement would be that the office building have accessible parking under those two statutes, which are both federal. Um, and that is because, uh, the interior of the units are multi-level, so each unit is two floors, and where it is a multi-unit, uh, multi-level unit, it does not fall under the FHA division of, uh, definition of a multi-story family, multi-family building that would require, um, two percent of parking be handicapped accessible. I was not able, in the time that I had, to go through the Massachusetts provisions on this, so I don't wanna make a representation to you on that until I got, had the opportunity to go through that as well. There was also a question, parking, that was raised, um, as far as the definitions in statute, in the ordinance of what the planning board could do, um, and I'm sure, I, I don't wanna repeat them to you. You're all very familiar with the ordinance, um, but there is this provision that allows the planning board to, um, locate not more than eight spaces in front of the principal building, um, in this development. The question raised was whether, um, you could do that with multiple buildings, where it says the principal building. Your zoning ordinance does have a definition of that term, and it says, "A building in which is conducted the main or principal use of the lot on which said building is situated." That is every building, um, perhaps with the exception of the office, but, um, you know, I think the, the office is part of the principal use, which is for multi-stud- multi-family dwelling purposes. So there is no provision that says you can only have one principal building on a lot, um, which I would expect if that was the case, nor could I, could you really identify any one of the buildings and say, "This is one where it was principally conducted." So multi-family use, it's in every building. Every building is the principal building under your ordinance. There are some, uh, questions about EV parking, um, and I think that Trevor's going to address them, but, uh, we had some questions about, uh, the stretch code applying. The stretch code is, of course, all something we're going to have to become familiar with. We believe that the requirement under the stretch code is for twenty percent of the spaces to be EV-ready spaces, um, and the intent is to comply to that, with that. Is there anything else that I could?
Yeah, no, I just, uh, I spoke with, uh, somebody in the building department, and they were going through the stretch code with me, and, uh, it was, uh, determined, or just, he just said, I'm not sure if he was correct or not, but he said it looked like it was twenty percent, uh, 'cause I, there's two different stipulations, once for R1, R2, and then, uh, all other RU's dwellings, any other RU's dwelling was twenty percent. He felt that we were gonna be under that, uh, that stipulation of it, instead of the R1 or R2, so. But, uh, yeah, so, um, do you want me to wait on that, Trevor, while you look that up, or?
Look what up.
Oh, I thought you were looking something up, sorry. All right, so, uh, the only other things I'll, uh, go through really, really quick, um, are the phasing of the project. Right here, so all Phase One is gonna be in this area here. Um, everything shaded over here, coming around and down this way is all Phase One, like that. So this three-year building here, this five-year building here, this, uh, six-unit building here, and then all this, uh, uh, stormwater runs down in this area, and so, um, once that phase is complete, I mean, the, the stormwater should be able to handle itself, uh, at that point. Phase Two is gonna include, um, this parking area down here and, uh, this building over here, all the way up to this, but then the swale is also gonna be constructed in the infiltration back here, because all this stormwater's gonna backfill back down this way and, and tie into this. So during, at the end of the Phase Two, all stormwater should be complete, and then, uh, Phase Three will be, uh, the Templeton Lot here, just building that out, uh, once we get approval from them, and then Phase Four will finalize, uh, the last three buildings and the turnaround, um, and all the parking associated with that. I know there was a, one comment that, uh, a turnaround should be provided at the end of each phase, and, uh, we'll, uh, work on developing some plans to show just interim turnarounds at every, end of every phase, and, um, and yes, so we had, we also had, I'm sure you guys have seen, the engineering plans done by the electrical engineer, who just kinda went through what kinda lighting's gonna be in here. It's all downcast LED lumineers to, you know, eliminate as much, uh, just light pollution off-site as possible, and so they did that design for us, and, lastly, we had a landscaping design done by Berkshire Design, and, uh, they went through and just kind of, uh, threw different species in there that would be native to the site, and, uh, added some screening in areas that would need screening around the dumpsters, um, and in certain areas, uh, where, uh, the development gets close to a butter, so down in this area, down in this area here, and just to make the site a little bit more sightly and, uh, you know, eliminate the frustrations of the abutters seeing a new development, you know, behind their house, so. With that, um, I guess I can take, uh, any questions, uh, concerns?
Just stay right there with the lighting plan, please.
Yes.
Can you just go, Trevor, a little more detail on what is included in the lighting plan? The streetlights, on poles?
Yeah, so, um, I'll just-
What's included in the parking areas?
Go here, so I think it's mostly just, uh, the, the streetlights that he, he designed. Um, all these L2 labels are all the, the streetlights, and, um, I believe the L3s are as well, um, coming all the way down through here. I, I didn't speak with the electrical engineer, so I, I didn't, uh, really review this plan too, too much.
No, I don't want you to go into great detail, just, just to, you know?
Yeah, so yeah, we got light poles here, here, um, coming up through here. The B1s, um, they're gonna be, uh, these, uh, ballard-type, um, lighting in front of the, uh, where are they? They're at the bottom?
Yeah, right top.
Up top?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, light ballards. So they're just like small little ballards, um, that way, you know, the, uh, the people that are living in the development, you know, don't have a crazy light shining their eye. They'll just be kinda like low ambient light to light up the sidewalks throughout the development, rather than having, you know, a big, big, um, you know, light that's shining right through. Um, and yeah, so then coming down, uh, through here, it's all just, um, the, the regular light poles with the downcast lighting, all the way down through here, and then the last one being right in the center of the, the turnaround there.
So there is not gonna be any lighting on, on the back of the buildings at all?
Um, I'm not sure if the architectural plans, uh, go into that much detail with it. Um, I'm sure if I would, it would just, you know, be, uh, uh, just a downcast light, but we'll, we'll go into that and make sure that no lights shining into the abutters' eyes. We'll, we'll talk with the, the lighting engineer and, uh, maybe add that, or the architect, just to get further detail on that for sure, 'cause you don't want big spotlights or floodlights.
Right, exactly, yeah, for sure. If people are putting on, if, if your tenants end up putting lights on the back of the buildings, it might, you know, might cause an issue with your closed other.
Yeah.
The entrance to, uh, West Broadway, um, I know, I know you, you're not supposed to let light bleed off the site, and, yeah, you did a good job doing that. However, do you know if there is a light on the street on West Broadway near that entrance? Because obviously you don't wanna have a dark entrance either, you know?
I do not believe there is, 'cause I need, I know the exist, there's a utility pole here, and then there's a utility pole here, but I do not believe there are streetlights on that. Um, we do have a proposed sign right here, and that'll have just like low-
The upper.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, the, the upper lighting. Um, but yeah, that's something we can look into, uh, maybe just adding to the, a utility pole down there, uh, when, when it comes to it, uh, but yeah, I didn't get, get an abut right across the street there, too, so that's, that's gotta be kept in mind.
Absolutely, but I mean, if you have a dark entrance there and you have people pulling out into West Broadway with forty, forty-five mile an hour traffic, um, coming in both directions, and, yeah, it's-
I'm hoping the new rotary will slow that down a little bit.
For the safety issue, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
It's kinda far from that.
Yeah, yeah.
Something to consider.
Yeah, okay. I'll write that down.
There's none visible from Google.
Love technology.
So much to Chairman again, if I may. On one of the things here, it says, uh, "All crosswalks within the development will be raised as speed bumps," is, uh-
Correct.
Where do you have that kinda located, just different spots?
Yeah, for sure. Uh, so, down here, so the first one's gonna be located here. It's all these little hashed areas with the, the crosswalks. The first one's located here. We didn't feel like one was necessary here, 'cause there was another one right here, and this is gonna be a stop sign coming out this way, so we felt like that, uh, that could be left out there. But then we have another one right here, uh, coming up, up the road. We have another one right here, and the last one is right here.
So you got about like four speed bumps?
Yeah, four, four speed bumps, and then you're coming down here, you're getting close to the rotary, and a lot of the traffic is, you know, starting to slow down for that rotary anyway, and, uh, it's gonna be less traffic, 'cause most of the development's behind it anyway. So, um, yeah, we felt that that was, uh, adequate, every couple hundred feet, just to keep traffic going slow.
Why is the bulk of the parking to the front of the buildings as opposed to the rear?
Uh, so, and the nature of the development, um, basically, the, the front of the development, it, it gives, uh, access to the, the dwellings, uh, right in the front. If you had the parking come around to the rear, A, it's gonna cause a lot more disturbance in the back here, and, uh, and my personal opinion on it is if you have, uh, you know, parking coming to the back, you're gonna be adding another, uh, about a minimum of forty-seven feet of, uh, of impervious to, to create access back here, even if it's a one-way disturbance. Um, I went through, uh, the whole regulation. It, even if it's a forty-five degree angle, you still need, I think it's like, it's like fourteen plus, plus twenty-eight, or some, something like that, or eighteen, I forgot what it was. Uh, but, uh, I think it was a minimum of forty-four when the, the sidewalk, the parking, and the aisle was concerned with the forty-five degree parking coming back here. So if you picture that behind every single building, I mean, you're talking like, it, it's gonna be more of a parking lot than, than not, and you're talking about no yard in the back for these people, and, um, it just, you know, eight parking spots was a, was a good fit. We felt, you know, uh, just keeping some of the parking in the front and, you know, eliminating them from having to walk so far to the middle of these buildings, and, uh, while still keeping a lot of landscaped area to each side of the eight spaces. Um, we know that, you know, it's, it's at your discretion, but we felt like, just to condense the development and not, uh, you know, yeah, impede on the abutters even more than we already are, um, and to just keep the, uh, the excess stormwater that would have to, you know, develop because of the additional impervious, um, it'd be quite, quite the increase.
I don't see ninety-degree parking spaces backing out into your main drag as being particularly safe. I, I don't see that as, uh, promoting a better site layout.
So, um-
I have a little problem with that.
I, I don't believe it's ninety-three, so we have one, two, three units, uh-
No, it's a ninety, ninety-degree.
What's that?
He said ninety-degree.
Oh, ninety-degree, I see what you're saying.
Oh, not ninety spaces, ninety-degree.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I misheard you. Um, so basically, the, the whole intent by trying to slow traffic down as much as possible. If you picture being in a supermarket parking lot, you got twenty-four-foot aisles and ninety-degree parking spaces, and you're backing out, and some, some, uh, parking lots are, you know, people are flying down twenty, twenty-five miles an hour. It's gonna be very similar or even more safe, because we have all the speed, the speed bumps and everything like that backing out, plus we have an additional six feet before you're even in that twenty-four-foot wa- uh, aisle behind, so you start backing out, and your, your back, your rear end isn't even at the edge of the road until you're six feet out. Uh, so it gives you, you know, ample opportunity, you know, for people, A, to see you backing out and slow down, or you to see them, and, uh, we felt, you know, if, if we could keep the, you know, the level of, you know, safety and, you know, by people going a lot slower, then, you know, all the risk would be, you know, mitigated, and, you know, with it being similar to a speed of a, you know, parking lot, if not even slower, we, we felt comfortable with the design.
Well, another hangup I've got is under six, seven, five, seven, seven zero of, uh, the zoning ordinance, um, preferred design for parking would be at the sides and rear of the buildings, not in front.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, that's where the, the stipulation for the, uh, planning board's, uh, ability to grant eight spaces in front of the, the primary structure, or, uh, what was the, the term it was?
It's all part of the same ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, it's, and, you know, the language, um, the language in the ordinance, I think, was designed to allow a lot of flexibility to the planning board, um, because it's not really, uh, when it has those three examples there, um, what it says is preferred, it says, uh, maybe acceptable, and then it says generally inappropriate. So I don't see, uh, number one, there's no absolute prohibition on any of that. I think it's left that, um, uh, ability to have the eight spaces to the planning board's discretion. I'm also gonna point out that we're currently in a building that has all the parking out in front, and, you know, we had, we function perfectly, perfectly well here-
This is a residence, Miss Trigg.
And that's on a, it's not a residential, but it is one that is very frequently used. People are in and out, and in and out, and in and out, and that's a public way that goes a lot quicker than the interior access way here, which also has a set-off of six feet-
Yeah.
Um, which is more than is provided out front of this building. Um, these spaces will provide a lot of convenience to the residents. So I'm sure you can imagine, as a resident of a apartment building, what you wanna, gonna, gonna wanna do, especially if you come home with groceries, gonna wanna go in the front door and park right in front of it to the extent that you can. That allows a better quality of life to the residents. Um, and as far as the creation of additional impervious surfaces by moving all of the parking off the front, um, you're creating, uh, uh, you know, the potential for more drainage issues, which was a major concern for the few people who did show up to the prior meetings. More impervious surfaces, more drainage water. If you have more activity concentrated at the rear of the building, that, um, then you're going to have more potential for lights shining onto the surrounding properties as well. Um, so when you look at the totality of the factors, uh, the safety measures as far as the speed bumps that are, uh, have been put in, um, we can certainly address having some signage, um, for a warning for people who are gonna be backing out into the roadway. Um, but in the totality, having just that limited eight spaces, which can be assigned to each residence, um, you know, one per unit in most buildings, um, is gonna be a greater overall quality of life and provide a better site plan design.
Mr. Cormier?
Was there ever, uh, diagonal or parallel parking considered?
It was, um, but the, the whole nature of the development being, uh, you're backing out onto a two-way street, uh, you don't really want everything kind of pitched in one way. Uh, I suppose you could, 'cause the, say you have, uh, the structures on this side of the road, uh, you'd have to, I guess, have them come this way, so then the residents have to go all the way up, turn around, come back down, and then pull in. Um, so I, I guess it would be, you know, somewhat feasible, um, but it's just, you know, the, the ninety-degree thing, you know, with the amount of space you have, you know, six feet on each side plus the twenty-four feet, you got thirty-six, uh, aisle where there's, you know, supposed to be twenty-four in a regular parking lot, uh, we, we felt it was comfortable to, to put the ninety-degree, uh, parking spots, but, um, I guess it, it's an interesting concept, I guess, uh, if we did need to, you know, alter some things to, you know, come to some agreement, but.
Was the argument against parallel? I'm sorry.
Not parallel, I think at forty-five.
Okay.
Uh, so say you had, um, the spots on this, this side of the road, you'd, I mean, you'd have to go all the way up and then all the way back down, and, you know, just generate more traffic in the general area, rather than just pulling up to your unit and then pulling off. And the, the aisle, you know, between the two, I mean, you got plenty of, uh, plenty of clearance in between the two parking spots. You got thirty-six feet instead of a twenty-four foot that would be typically required in a ninety-degree parking lot, so we just felt like it was, you know, appropriate for the, the situation and how much room you have to maneuver in that access aisle.
I think he did mention parallel parking, too, though.
Par- parallel parking?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, um, I think, uh, I guess one issue, uh, that I can see right off the bat is, you know, we have snow storage areas on each side of these eight parking spots. And so if you have parallel parking all the way in front of the units, then, you know, if a car's parked there, then, you know, you'd have to have all the cars parked somewhere else to put the, you know, to get the snow on, in front of the units. And, um, so it just kind of consolidates the parking, so you have a little bit more landscaped area, uh, in, in my, my view.
So maybe you don't put parallel parking in front of the entire structure.
Okay.
Maybe it's just a portion and you keep your snow storage areas there. I, I just, I, I just thought, that's all.
Um, so you're, you're saying like put a couple of spots here and here maybe, and then, it, I mean, it's still, it's still parking in front, so it's kind of, it's, it's one of those things that I, I don't think it really helps matters, uh, to a degree to, you know, change the design.
That's your decision to make, not ours, but that's just the, you know, something that the board members throwing out there.
Is there a reason that that would be more preferable, or?
Certainly safer.
So I just,
Allows you to maintain additional, um, landscaped area in front of the buildings where there is hardly any. Yeah, uh, looks better.
Just to comment on the parallel parking, um, although, uh, all of the drivers in Massachusetts have, uh, special status in the rest of the nation. I don't think we have, um, in general, great skills in parallel parking, uh, among our driving population. It's not something that's, you know, a very frequent co- uh, parking arrangement in this area and people just aren't used to it. Um, if we're looking at a safety issue, then I think parallel spaces in the front would actually create more problems with people backing in, backing out in the roadway for part of that period of time. Um, and I'm just, you know, I'm not sure that we could accommodate the number of spaces that's required if we have so few in front of each building. If the object is to, um, have a better site plan design, provide some convenience to the residents, we're gonna have very few residents fighting over very few parallel parking spaces.
Yeah, I tend to disagree with you, Attorney Tree. I mean, as far as a safety issue is concerned, if you have people pulling and backing out of a ninety-degree space, um, if you ever looked at the amount of accidents there are in Timpani Plaza Parking Lot, people backing in and out of parallel, I mean, ninety-degree spaces, um, I probably, I, I think it's a larger danger than it is pulling and parking in a parallel parking space.
Well, I guess, um, you know, I'm thinking of the process. You pull alongside another vehicle, then you have to turn around and you have to back in and back into that space, which some people can do in one pass and others take several times. Um, I, I, I think there are concerns, um, both ways, and I don't think that the switch to parallel improves it. Um, but certainly, you know, a change of that magnitude would require reexamination of whether we have sufficient parking, whether it's close enough to each unit. We're going to be expanding the other parking lots. If that's the case, if we need to create more parking that's not in front of the building in order to meet the ordinance. Um, and, and that goes, uh, again, against the goal of trying to cut down on the impervious area, trying to cut down on any kind of intrusion onto the abutters. Um, and from the original plan, uh, the board or, or, or you serve might remember that we were trying to maintain approximately a fifty-foot boundary between this lot and the abutters. We've cut into it a little bit here. Um, but otherwise, we've done a fairly good job of maintaining it and, um, to, you know, kind of make sure that they continue to be able to enjoy their property. Um, we think this version of the plan is really the preferable option.
Then, uh, the only other thing that you had mentioned is the, the landscaping in front. If you can just like look at this, I mean, you can kind of see, you know, we have, do have the eight spaces in front, but then it's, it's met with, you know, quite a bit of landscaping on each side. The eight spaces, nice little landscaped area in between, you know. So it's not like it's completely, uh, impervious and the lack of landscaping in front of the units. I mean, you still have some landscaping in front. Uh, which I, I, I think looks pretty good myself, but.
Obviously, we can't tell, but is there a sidewalk in front of those buildings?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, there is sidewalks all the way across. You can kind of see them right here. They're kind of the darker shaded, but yeah, they, uh, they run all the way around.
The other question, Mr. Chairman, would be, uh, says here by the building code, you're talking about, uh, electric vehicle charging stations. We haven't mentioned that. How do you? What, what is your guys' recommendation? What are you guys gonna be doing for electrical vehicle?
So currently, currently, we have them, uh, uh, installed, here, we can see, I'll zoom in a little bit.
And I'm not too sure what the code now in Massachusetts is.
So we do have twenty percent, uh, shown on this plan, uh, twenty percent that could be, uh, electrical, uh, amenable. Uh, you've got one spot right here, uh, two spots right there, two spots right here. And then, um, we kind of kept them kind of further away because not a lot of people have electric vehicles right now. So it's gonna be one of those things that kind of develops over time. We don't wanna reserve the closest spots for, you know, something that's not.
In front of the buildings.
Not in front of the buildings as of this design right here, but no, see, we have some areas here and I believe these four down here are also EV, uh, or, these two, sorry. And then, uh, coming down here, we have some out back behind here, couple spots right in here by the, uh, office and apartment building, couple spots over here, um, and then working our way back to the rear parking lot. We have four here. So that's just, you know, uh, preliminary, uh, thought, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Our zoning enforcement officer advises that each one and two family dwelling in townhomes shall be provided with at least one EV-ready space.
Yeah.
FYI.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we looked at that and I, that's when I, I spoke to somebody else at the, the building department. They told me twenty percent, so, um, I just gotta look through that and, uh, come to, uh, finalization on that. I think Christine Tree did a little bit more digging on that as well as she will.
So I did take some time to look at the, um, stretch code. And, um, there is the table at R four oh far, four oh four point four in that of, of, I think it's two fifty-seven CMR twenty-two, um, that has, uh, the provision for one and two family dwellings um, in townhomes and then all other R use buildings, but it also has some exceptions. It says that R two multifamily properties may elect to comply with the commercial EV-ready requirements in C four oh five point thirteen, and that is twenty percent. So I think, um, this building has the option of going with the, you know, one for every unit um, or the twenty percent of total.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
So the, so the city does not allow parking in front of a, a, a structure. Um, it's pretty clear in the zoning code. Um, I do agree with the building commissioner's, um, interpretation of, of the code. Um, he is a zoning enforcement officer. And, um, uh, the plan board does have, um, the means of where they may grant permission during site plan review to, um, to locate no more than eight parking spaces in front of the principal building, um, where such location promotes a better site layout. Um, I've been bringing this point to the applicant's attention since development review committee meeting. We had, uh, in July and again in August, um, there was some improvements made on the site. They created four parking lots off of the main access road. Um, but still maintained eight spots in front of each, each structure, which, um, you know, five structures with eight spots in front of it, I think is, uh, not consistent with how our zoning reads. Um, it does say the principal structure, um, and so, you know, I think it's a, it's a real stretch. Um, and again, I, I agree with how the, the zoning enforcement officer interprets the code.
See, where I'm getting hung up is, and I could be wrong here, but where, what I'm hearing is we don't wanna build more parking lots. And I don't see that as a compelling reason, uh, to allow all that parking in front of those buildings. That's my opinion.
I mean, I, I think the, you know, the number one concern is, you know, the, the proximity of access, you know, from your parking to, to the structure. If you, uh, take into consideration, you know, uh, some of these parking and stuff like that right here and here, uh, the closest parking lot is way over here, so if you didn't have any, any parking in these areas, then you'd have to be walking quite, quite a ways, you know, with groceries and everything like that. So having, you know, spots in front do, does have a quality of life aspect, aspect for the residents in the development. And, um,
Or you could rethink your design. Yeah, I'm leaning towards the advice from the zoning, uh, enforcement officer. His recommendation is the design of the structures and parking match either the acceptable or preferred diagrams as, uh, illustrated in, uh, six, seven, five, seven, seven, zero. And I'm leaning towards preferred design. Cause I'm still not hearing a compelling reason to have all that parking in front of those buildings. Other than we don't wanna build parking lots.
It, it, so it's not, we don't wanna build parking lots. Um, you're dealing with, with a design that is, you know, very, very common within the city. Um, I think, eh, you know, the move to put it in behind, behind the building has a place in some areas. Not this one, not this one, because what we're trying to do is contain the use on the property and separate it from the abutters. If we put all of that parking on the back of every building, we're just moving all of that traffic, all of those lights, all of that engine noise closer to the abutters. That is, eh, I would say not accomplishing the goal of the ordinance, which I think was to separate the residential uses from the traffic. Um, eh, it's providing a substantial inconvenience to everyone who lives in the building. They're gonna have to go for the parking lots. You're providing the likelihood of more light pollution by having those, that greater, you know, lighting structure required on the rear of the buildings closer to the abutters. Um, you know, I, I, I think that, um, Mr. Beauregard and I could probably sit here and debate the meaning of the words in the ordinance as far as principal building goes. Um, I don't think that's where the, where the board's, um, issue lies.
Necessary.
Yeah.
Well, it's up to, it's ultimately up to the zoning enforcement officer anyways, so.
See, that's the thing.
If I could, so we got these comments this afternoon and I'd be happy to go back and have a conversation with, um, the building commissioner about this interpretation and see if we can, uh, discuss this a little further. Um, you know, but the, the first comment that I'd have in response to that is, if it means the principal building, which building on this plan is the principal building? Which one? If there is the principal building, which one is it?
To my mind, it would be your office.
Yeah, but that, but that's not where the use is conducted at all. The use is a multifamily dwelling, and that is taking place in every one of those residential structures. And that, eh, again, that's why I'd be happy to go back and have a conversation with the, the building commissioner.
Well, see, that's the thing is board members, we tend to defer to our resident experts, our city engineer, our code enforcement officer, our, our, uh, our planner. Um, these little nuances are their purview, their strength.
Right.
Uh, not ours, which is why I keep hedging on the parking, because I'm reading what he says and looking at his interpretation going, yeah, he's got a point. You too have a point. So I think that's a discussion you should have with the zoning code, uh, enforcement officer.
And I would even argue that, that clause in the zoning doesn't even, it's not even relevant to a project like this. I think it was created more for, in, in, uh, commercial industrial development where you have one principal building along a stretch of roadway, whereas then the planning board, if they do allow eight spaces, up to eight spaces in front of that principal building, then they are able to ask for a condition where you actually extend that to the, um, a budding property where the same use is occurring with the same type of parking area. And that's why I think applying it to a project like this, I, I, I don't think this is created for, for something like this. And I, I, I do think if you go around looking at similar projects in the city, you're not gonna see parking in the front. You're gonna see parking either on the side or in the rear on similar projects like this. I don't think the city's ever approved a project.
Like this, in, in recent time.
Yeah, I, I, so I, I think if, if it's relevant, again, we can, eh, kind of take a look at some other buildings of similar size in the area and provide some examples.
Well, my experience just riding around the city this afternoon and looking at, uh, Ridgewood Arms and Musket Ridge and Old English Village, none of them have parking like that.
Well, and, and I'd, I'd look at that example in, um, in the zoning ordinance. Um, and it talks about the street, the street, the street. That's not a street. That's an access way. Um, and if we were talking about a building on a street, on a public wo- way, a road that's heavily traveled, like Broadway, um, like West Broadway there, I, I definitely see the point in that. Keep that kind of parking away from the front of that building. Um, and that's exactly what you'd have in a commercial use. Um, this, I think this is a, you know, it's, it's a little access roadway. Um, I don't think there's a great danger presented, and I do think it concentrates that use inward, inward between these two buildings, you know, that get repeated along this way and away from the abutters.
How many speed bumps, crosswalks, that are serving as speed bumps do you have in there?
There's gonna be four of them.
Four?
They're separated roughly by like four or five hundred feet.
And how long is your roadway beginning to?
I believe it's eighteen fifty to the end of the, uh, cul-de-sac.
Eighteen fifty?
I think so, right? Or am I thinking, I, I have so many projects going on, I'm sorry. Well, I'll double check.
If you're asking for a waiver for that, I'm not sure.
Ten fifty, sorry. Ten fifty right here, uh, is the end station.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's busy time of year.
So, um, so your question was the length of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, I was thinking, uh, I was listening to Attorney Tree's ar- ar- argument and thinking about the length of the road, how many speed bumps. And trying to reconcile that with the safety issues I have in my mind as well. I'm not dismissing your other arguments, but I s- part of me is defaulting to safety.
For sure. That's, you know, that's what the speed bumps were. They were in the original design. They were added in after to, you know, try to reduce speed in that area. Uh, you know, sp- speed will be posted ten to fifteen, uh, miles an hour, depending on.
Yeah, cause there's not gonna be a traffic cop up there. People are gonna do what they do.
Exactly, yeah. So, yeah, that's why we wanna put physical impediments to, uh, to people going crazy fast, so.
Trevor, what, what, uh, what will they be constructed out of, the speed bumps?
I believe they're gonna be, uh,
Just raised.
Yeah, just raised. They're gonna be poor concrete. I think they're poor concrete.
It's a specific design. It's not a speed bump that you typically see. They're, they're fairly broad.
Yeah.
So they're less pronounced. They're six inches tall because it's a raised crosswalk.
Yeah, but it's more gradual.
Yeah, it's a smoother transition than a speed bump.
My, my only concern, if they're concrete, then that's obviously good.
No, it's pavement, sorry. Batina's pavement.
Because it's a matter of, you know, wha- whatever it's constructed out of, how long it's gonna last.
I made sure it wasn't, yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause I didn't want the salt, yeah. So right here, this is, uh, kind of how it's gonna look. It's ten feet wide at the crosswalk and then the six, uh, six-foot transition, uh, in between. Uh, you know, get a little curb, uh, curb drains on each side so that the water can go through and, uh, the sidewalk will tie right into it.
So I've seen these where they haven't worked and they've actually been taken out because. because of, they just deteriorate, especially with the plowing and all that.
I know sometimes they make them out of brick too, I believe, in Keene, like by Keene State, I think they have those, and those have held up pretty good.
Sometimes I've seen them with a metal top that has a texture to it along the top where the crosswalk is. For a short period of time, a number of years ago, lived in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and they are frequent users of this type of traffic calming measure, and it does really stop you from traveling at speed.
Okay, because I'm thinking if they're not aggressive enough, then people will just fly over them anyway.
If not the first time, the second time.
Yes. Had a little bumper sacrificed to one of those once.
Well, I think, if you gentlemen concur, I think where we're at right now is that the proponent should have a conversation with the building commissioner.
We'll clear that out.
Get into a little more nuance about 675770, because right now, me personally, I'm not speaking for you two, but me personally, right now, I'm deferring to his definition until such time as there's other clarification. And if there's no objection from the board members, I would like to continue this public meeting until such time as that conversation happens. Hopefully, we'll see you again next month on the 14th.
We have for this use a special permit that needs to go back before ZBA as well, so I anticipate we'll be, you know, with both boards. I, I do anticipate we're going to be at least before ZBA, ZBA once before the planning board is ready to approve site review so that both boards can coordinate with each other what they want to do.
All right, well, as, as it goes, we'll be here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we will continue this public meeting until at least November the 14th. Next up, our regular meeting.
Thanks to all the board members.
All right, 7:45, so we're good. So we can transition right into our regular meeting. First up, approval of minutes for the public hearing for rules and regulations concerning subdivision of land, all-purpose storage from last time, and our regular meeting. I want to entertain a motion.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, except the minutes as sent to us.
Second.
Motion made in second, and any discussion? All right, by voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, happens all the time.
Hope that wasn't your watch.
Oh, it was his mouse, I thought it was his easel. Oops.
I've done that.
You're definitely a...
Thanks, guys.
Excuse me. New business, definitive site plan for all purpose, and 2.2, private oversight, and see a lot of discussion here since both of those have been continued until next time around.
Yes.
Much, you guys want to talk about any?
No, the only other, they'd have to touch base with you for the West Broadway, for the things that you brought up also.
Yeah, I guess with other projects, I'd ask, allow the board to allow me to work with their engineer and work through those with copying, you must be your guard on our correspondence.
I agree.
Of course.
Absolutely. All business, nothing. Any more items for us?
Nope, other than next meeting.
Okay, next meeting, Tuesday, November 14th. Everybody good with that?
Sounds good. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second and to adjourn. Any discussion? By voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.